Here at 1.1, we're going to call the board to open session. Open session of the July 26, 2023, Governor and Board Trustees meeting is called order at 5:46 p.m. By law, our board policy has notified you this meeting is being recorded by law board policy. Members of the public may address the board on items on the agenda or on non-agenda items. Let's call the board to present a brief request to the board. Therefore, I ask you to come into speaker's seat since that is not a current edition meeting. Speakers list for non-agenda items need to be turned in prior to item 4.2. Hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items will be recognized and called upon at the time. You have three minutes to address the government board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will be returned in by item 5.3. Hearing of the public regarding agenda items will be recognized and called upon when your request comes up. You'll have three minutes to address the government board. 1.2, public input concerning items on the closed session agenda. Members of the public who have requested an address to the government board regarding items that are in closed session. And it's very important, certainly, I don't close session agenda is announced. 2, closed session. Closed session does not mean follow-up open session. 3.1, vote of the pledge allegiance. Vote, vote of the clerk to his pledge allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance, unified by the United States of America and to the republic, over which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.2, approval of the agenda of moving consent item, consent agenda item 6.5 as there's a motion needed for possibly surplus items. Is there a motion to approve the agenda with approval of consent agenda item 6.5? So move, second. Sorry. Motion of all the favor, aye. Motion to approve the agenda passes. Call the order, 3.3, call the order meeting of the legislative body, CFP number 55. I'm sorry, 95-1. Call the order meeting of the legislative body of CFP number 95-1 at 5:48 p.m. 3.4, for approval, agenda for the meeting of the legislative body of CFP number 95-1. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So move, is there a second?
Second.
All the favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Catherine. We have a mistake, it's already happened. I'm not the Catherine, so just confirm this is Catherine.
Oh, that was the agenda, I'm sorry. The agenda not going to be, I'm sorry.
Thank you, that's okay.
We're going to check again.
But she was already on, so.
Okay.
This is a question to check.
Hello. Hi, Catherine. This is 8:00 p.m., and I'm going to get you on speaker here and ready for a closed session. We're going to be.
I'm for free, thank you.
You're welcome.
If I could just write my vote.
Okay. Yes, sorry, we're at 3.4 right now. And for approval agenda for the meeting of the legislative body of CFP number 50. I'm sorry, 95-1. And there's currently a motion to approve the agenda, and there's a second, and we're voting on it. So all those in favor, again, aye.
Aye.
What, oh, we need to do a poll, or just, yeah, okay. Motion to approve the agenda passes. 3.5, for approval minutes of July 27, 2022, CFP number 95-1. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Two.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And Allen Houston, state. Motion to approve the minutes passes. 3.6, order approval resolution number CFP 95-100, resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar New School District, acting as the legislative body of the Community Facilities District 95-1, with current adjustments in special tax rates for such community facilities district for fiscal year 2023, 2024. Mr. Delahanty introducing Mr. Floyd.
Good evening, President Bob, members of the board, Dr. Clark. This evening, we have Doug Floyd, a fellow member who is here to speak to the board on our resolutions and the actions related to CFPs 95-1 and 99-1, the community facilities districts relevant within our school district. And so, Mr. Floyd is here to speak to these items, to be able to answer any questions related to the board that they have produced and the steps that we are asking the board to take with respect to these two community facilities districts as well. And over to Doug Floyd.
Thank you, Chris, good evening board members, government board, district staff. I also want to recognize I'm here with Javier Maciano. He's with my firm, and he's really responsible for the day-to-day activities of the community facilities districts. So these actions, another portion of the agenda, are required by the board each year, and they're necessary into all these CFP taxes with the county that actually must be taken before August end of each year. So used to be each year around this time of year. Part of the items include various resolutions to set the tax rates for the fiscal year 23, 24, to approve a proposed budget for the fiscal year, and to direct the levy of taxes. You'll find in the board packet, along with these resolutions, exhibits for each of the CFDs that detail the proposed tax rates. You'll also find what we refer to as an annual report that contains general information related to the community facilities districts, including the developments, the debt service schedules, as well as the proposed budgets. The CFDs are primarily used to pay for debt service on bonds that were issued. The bonds were issued in order to provide for school facilities of the district. I would like to note and clarify that the rate structures and methodologies that are employed by the CFDs were established at the time the CFDs were formed. And so, we really, the district is following the rate structure and rate methodologies each year to adjust the rates. Both of the CFDs incorporate with the concept known as the initial maximum special tax rate. The initial maximum special tax rates are adjusted each year based on the change in construction cost index, and that's to help with our inflation. Only new properties or newly added properties to the tax hole are subject to those initial tax rates in that year. So if we're looking at the fiscal year 23, 24, initial tax rates, the properties that are newly added, and they're added based on the issuance of the bill of increment, would be subject to that rate, and those rates would then lock in for that property for the entire duration of the tax term. So you will see differences in the tax rates when properties are added, but for a property owner from year to year, they won't see it adjusted. With that, the first set of resolutions are for community facilities district 95-1. This generally encompasses the area of Torrey Hills, as well as areas around Seymour Ridge Elementary. We're looking at a levy of approximately 1.7 million. The year-to-year increase is about $7,500 based on the addition of three new homes in the CFD. And with, I don't know if we can talk about 99-1 or just those are the action items for 95-1. And I continue.
Can you still consider 1.1? Sorry.
Yeah, I did not open up to any questions regarding 95-1.
Do you have any questions?
So as the new board member, I get to ask any questions. So you were mentioning that increase, which is roughly the 2% that we see in the listening?
Yes.
And then, the one-time special tax is that I see that we had that in 94, 95 fiscal year, and now for this fiscal year, can you explain that a bit more?
The one-time tax?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a one-time tax that's charged when a applicant comes to the district and is requesting a certificate of compliance. So they pay those fees upfront before they even acquire a building and enter the construction.
Anything else?
How much longer do we have to pay this off?
So for 95-1, each property gets charged for a term of 35 years. So if they started back in 2000, it's 35 years from there. If they become, if the property became developed this year, it goes 35 years.
I understand that for 95-1, how much longer do we have?
Well, I mean, there's still development occurring in pockets. So if a property was first developed in this year, 23, 24, that would be taxed for 35 years after that.
Doesn't it, doesn't it relate to the bond issuance?
If from this CFD, it was not.
Okay. Is that for all the CFDs?
No, the CFD 99-1 has a set tax term that translates for all properties. So it's a little bit, with every community facilities district is different. The 95-1 happens to tax properties for a certain charge each parcel, and 99-1, it can be some kind of base.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution for CFD 95-100? Two, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve CFD 95-100 passes. 3.7, board approval resolution number 95-101. Resolution for Justice of Delmar New School District acting as legislative body of the Community Facilities District 95-1, establishing a budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, directing levy of special tax, taking related actions. I don't think there's anything additional on this. So is there a motion to approve this resolution of that CFD 95-101? Two, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve resolution number CFD 95-101 passes. 3.8, for approval adjourned, in a term of the meeting of the legislative body of CFD number 95-1. Call for motion to, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting adjourned at 5:59 p.m. And 3.9, call the order, meeting of legislative body of CFD number 99-1. Let's call the order, meeting of, call the order, the meeting of the legislative body of CFD number 99-1 at 5:59 p.m. 3.10, for approval agenda for meeting of the legislative body of CFD 99-1. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the agenda passes. 3.1, for approval minutes of July 27, 2022, CFD number 99-1, meaning is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll mention that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A second.
And all the things, motion to approve the minutes passes. 3.12, for approval resolution number CFD 99. 6.6, resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar New School District acting as legislative body of the Community Facilities District 99-1, determining adjustments in special tax rates for such community facilities districts for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And Mr. Floyd, is there a second on 99-1?
Thank you. I'll just echo that these are the same set of resolutions that are out for 99-1, setting the tax rate for the 23, 24 year. I'll just add some context that this CFD encompasses the city type of branch development. And if we're looking as far as budget year over year, we did have 85 units added to the CFD that are being taxed, being taxed this year. Those are included in the project being developed by Shea Homes. There's like 85 units. That is actually the second or last planned community within the high branch area. There's one more larger development that's planned for over 300 units that remains to be developed.
Do you mind sharing what the other one, the other 300 units that's developed is?
It's, it's, refers to as opening property, it's right.
Oh, okay.
It's a large area, but I don't.
Yeah, nothing's happening.
Nothing's happening.
Yes, that, that, that'd be cool. For this one, is there, is it, is there a timeframe?
Yes.
Kind of like Mr. Rafferty.
So the taxes will end in the year 2049, and that also aligns with when that belongs to the 40.
So for all residences, anybody that's been there at any point in the beginning, all ends in 2049?
Yeah.
Is there any other questions? Is there a motion to approve resolution number CFD 99-66? Two, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve resolution, CFD number CFD 99-66 passes. 3.13, for approval resolution number CFD 99-67, resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Delmar New School District acting as legislative body of the Community Facilities District 99-1, establishing a budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024, directing levy of the special tax, taking related actions, is there a motion to approve resolution number CFD 99-67? So move, is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion to approve resolution for CFD 99-67 passes. And 3.14, adjourned meeting of the legislative body of CFD number 99-1. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 6:03 p.m. Thank you for your time, Mr. Floyd. We are at 4.1 correspondence, Governor and Clerk.
Good evening, the superintendent's office received the following correspondence regarding district business topics. Transitional, transitional kindergarten, Delmar New School Project, and school placement. Thank you.
4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. Call members of public who have requested to address the government board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of public who would like to address the government board regarding a non-agenda item must complete and submit a speaker slip at this time concerning public items, sorry, non-agenda items. Thank you. And we have two, so we'll see, first we have Dan Spoloka, the Reverend Lieutenant of the U. of S.
Hello, I'm speaking because I'm concerned that students are being harmed because of the district's failure to act in the best interest of its students, in conjunction with the board's failure to act in oversight of the superintendent. To clarify, pursuant to state law, Ed. Code 35161, even though the board can delegate any of its duties to the superintendent, it is the board that is ultimately responsible for the performance of any duties that it delegates. In other words, even though Superintendent McClurg is responsible for managing the day-to-day operations of the district, as the board acts in oversight of the superintendent, it is the board that is ultimately responsible for ensuring that the district, through Superintendent McClurg, acts to fulfill the duties it owes to the community, particularly to the students, parents, and staff. This includes ensuring personnel programmatic and fiscal accountability, and ensuring that the district acts to comply with applicable state and federal laws and the board's policies. Further, the district has imposed on it a duty of reasonable care, which includes a duty of supervision to protect its students from reasonably foreseeable harm. And state law requires public school districts to adopt plans, policies, and/or strategies to engage parents in the educational process. However, the district does not seem to be acting to properly investigate and/or otherwise properly address parents' concerns, including concerns about the conduct of their site school principal. For example, parents submitted a no confidence statement to express that they felt that Delmar Hills Principal's conduct had caused damage, and also that the school was no longer a safe place for students. However, neither the board nor the superintendent seems to have acted to properly address the Delmar Hills parents' concerns, including at a board meeting or by holding a separate meeting. In addition, the declining enrollment is concerning, and thus, the district should be acting to encourage potential parents to enroll their children at Delmar Union Schools versus enrolling them in private schools or homeschooling, including, for example, by offering transitional kindergarten. However, it seems that the district is acting in contradictory ways. Also, the revised job description of the library media specialist is concerning, including because the library media specialist will no longer be responsible for selecting, acquiring, circulating, and distributing the books. Then the question is, who will, who is responsible for this? And considering that Delmar Union is a school, an elementary school district, I hope that the board will acknowledge.
As a Delmar and Torrey Hills parent, I was vaguely aware of the lack of a library at the Pacific Sky in Delmar Heights, and wrongly assumed that the librarians at all of the district's schools were credentialed and treated as important members of the teaching staff. This summer, many of his parents have become aware of the district's implementation of a plan to decentralize the libraries, as books have been thrown away, and once treasured libraries are or have been moved into smaller spaces or hallways. Word has gotten out that this is in the process of complete. Additionally, per agenda 6.11, the significantly revised job description of the library media specialist is up for approval. I'm asking, why is our supposedly innovative district getting rid of libraries, a move that is in direct opposition to California Department of Ed. and Common Core Code? I strongly encourage the board to enhance the librarian job description instead of significantly removing any of the forward-thinking efforts such a person would be in a position to implement. In other districts, the media specialist is known as a teacher librarian, i.e. someone who possesses both a California Teaching and a Teacher Librarian Services credential. In a district that prides itself on preparing our kids for a creative and technology-driven world, it doesn't make sense to weaken such a vital position. I completed my masters at NYU and doctoral work at UCSD, and as a former college-level educator, I've seen firsthand the problems that come with students not being able to discern valid sources from the vast array of information available. Librarians have an opportunity to help direct, to help change that trajectory by curating information and supporting teachers and students directly, teaching them about primary versus secondary print or electronic sources. Getting rid of sacred spaces of knowledge that libraries embody and diminishing the role of librarians as experts helping to guide quality work, this district is putting our children at risk for contributing to the culture of misinformation that leads to poor citizenship. I'm asking that, one, the board pause and reconsider the decentralization of the libraries and the weakening of the librarian position. And, two, to explain to the entire community at a future separate meeting what the long-term goals and plans are for the library's and these librarians. We deserve to know why such huge changes are being made and to provide input for this district by move.
Thank you. We are at 5.1. For government board members, and all those who are, is there a second?
Thank you, I haven't had much activity with school sites not being open for visits and other opportunities, but I have taken this opportunity, this downtime, to do more research on transitional kindergarten. So I'm very grateful at the lists that were filed and shared of other basic aid school districts, and able to do some research on how it's being implemented, whether districts are implementing it at all schools, some schools, one school, and I think this will help inform me as we continue the conversation that we had at the last special meeting about what opportunities we have to investigate how other districts are implementing transitional kindergarten and see how we can work with that.
And I appreciate the workshop last week, not only because it provides its way into a discussion about transitional kindergarten, but potentially other ways of using the facilities, the people, the, just everything we have in our district in different ways. And so, I see that as an evolution, looking at a situation that maybe viewed in the negative and you try and make a positive out of it, and it's something that our district is striving to do. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we bring forward from that and look forward to working in the future to accomplish whatever those things are. Thank you.
Hi, Governor.
Catherine, would you like to give your report?
I have an intro for I will begin here.
I actually don't need to require it, so we're on to 5.2. The superintendent's report.
Thank you. So our summer camp session two is, of course, actually coming to a close very soon. So it's been so successful, and as we do, as we see that, and see those kids enjoying summer and all that they have enjoyed with their experience, we are also getting ready for the 2023, 2024 split year. So, Catherine, I have to, that concludes my report for the state, thank you.
Thank you. And we are at 5.3, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. Anyone who would like to address the government board on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will be returned at this time. We're going to call the podium if your requested agenda item comes up and go through it, it's addressed the government board. 5.4, board approval meeting minutes for the June 20th, 2023, June 21st, 2023, and July 19th, 2023 meetings. Is there a motion to approve minutes for those meetings? All the group, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. We are at consent items, first, 6.1, 6.14 consent items. Does anyone have anything that you should discuss?
Can we pull 611 off the next?
Yes.
Just a clarification, I'll pull it off, you have questions?
I'll just pull off, if we have something to add or discuss.
Separate for this, okay. Is there anything else, anyone possible, or? I just have a quick question, and I didn't want to discuss 611 a little bit, but I did have a quick question on 67, which is Code to the Future, I was going to talk about that a little bit.
Sure, of course. Code to the Future is a group that will be working with our school district, or will be able to work with our school district. And the purpose of working with that group is having them come to us and work with our innovation technologists in SCAM Plus to help us build a computer science and robotics line of learning for our students. And so, Code to the Future works with schools throughout the state of California in order to help enhance what they do in the area of robotics and computer science. And I know that that's been in interest of our parents and some of our community groups, and so, that's been a part of it.
So how can, how can Catherine?
So how can, how does Catherine, what other school districts in the county have they worked with?
Um, I, I can't answer that question right now about schools in our community. I do know that they work with, that they are currently working with a school in Orange County. So we're able to see some of the work that they did at that school when visiting.
Okay, so you've been able to, you've been able to see some of their work and you were a part of that, you mean, today, as a partner for us?
Yes, so we went to visit a school, and we spoke with their teachers and their administrators around the work that they have done at that school in the past and what that looks like for students. We actually saw an exhibition of learning with students related to the work of Code to the Future. And we thought it would be a great partnership in order to help us build some capacity in our school district related to robotics and computer science.
I think it'd be interesting, maybe at a future board meeting, to understand more about how the district is viewing the role of coding and computer science at the elementary school level. I know that there have been hour code and other type things available for a long time in our district, but I would be interested to know how that fits with kind of the core curriculum and what we're trying to teach in the seminology as opposed to computer skills-based learning.
We can definitely.
So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Sorry, do you, I, I have a question about, well, Six Point Eight. I'm just wondering how many staff members are attending this? Yeah.
Okay, feel free to get going.
Okay, I don't know if you guys heard my question. I was just wondering how many staff members will be attending the, the, or shorter conferences for Six Point Eight?
Sure, so that conference is related to our STEAM Plus music teachers. So when we think about professional learning for different teacher groups in our school district, we really try to work to meet the needs of the different groups of people that we have. So this conference is for our music teachers, and currently, we have, I think, four music teachers that will be attending.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I'm fully with you on this. I know, I know that it's going to be good teachers. I just, what I'd really like to see going forward, because I've seen it done in other districts, is like a more complete breakdown of these costs. We just have, you know, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for staff to come in a conference. I don't know what that is. I need more information when it comes to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. What, what's that for? What are the hotel costs, what are the conference costs, the flight costs? That's not what I've seen done in other districts. I feel like it wants transparency. So I would ask, if going forward, we give a more complete breakdown of these dollars.
Okay, do you have additional questions? Catherine?
No, no, nothing.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item Six Point One through Six Fourteen minus the removal of items Six Five and Six Eleven, which we'll discuss in a second?
Second.
Second, then. All of that?
Aye.
Aye? Motion to approve the consenting item minus the items Six Five and Six Eleven. That's it, and Six Eleven, there it goes.
Regarding Six Eleven, the library specialist position, in reading the block line of the job description and seeing very substantial changes, and then current speaker and other anecdotal information, it seems this is connected to some larger programmatic changes, which I have in front of that. So I would be curious to hear about that before we begin this.
Yes, absolutely. So over the course of last school year, working within our instructional services and also working with one of our principals, she was working in conjunction with our current library media specialist to really look at identifying what are those opportunities for a, the, just reimagining what that library media specialist position could look like, and looking at what those job descriptions might look like as well, and identifying the corresponding duties. And so instructional services was working on that program, and then one of our principals who was working and supporting our current library media specialist then were working to identify what those next steps were and what that job description then might look like. And so as a result of gathering the input from our staff and from our principal, they then worked out, create a new updated job description that would reflect those duties. And so what it's looking at is working, looking at the way that those responsibilities will then look differently and change, rather than looking at how our library media specialists are then also working in conjunction with our innovation technologists to provide more robust, rich experiences within our, within our library and in our innovation space. One of the ways that we've had good experience with this last school year was with the way that our library was able to operate at Pacific Sky School, and we were able to put these programmatic changes in place. And so what I'll do is, instead of the benefit of having Alison right next to me, I'll ask Alison to explain a little bit of what that experience looks like for our students.
So the purpose of a decentralized library is to provide students with more access to books throughout the week and throughout the school day. And so with a decentralized library, you're taking your library collection and placing it throughout the school. This provides students the opportunity to check out books multiple times throughout the week or throughout the day, because we know that we have students who will go through books so quickly and compared to our traditional library schedules where they came through one time a week. This provides students the opportunity and agency to check out books when they feel is the right time for them. So at Pacific Sky, students in grades one through six checked out books on their own. There were distribution of corrals throughout the school where they checked out books. They returned them when they were finished reading. The library media specialist each day came through multiple times a day throughout the school site to read, to check those books back into the system, and then reshell the books.
And what has changed about the role? I can see what's here about money for me.
So what's changed about the role is that our library media specialist then also works with students in a variety of ways, not just doing a read aloud in a thirty-minute time span one time a week. So our library media specialist will work with students to do some read alouds to help them. They will gather information around what books they're finding interesting, making sure that, you know, we do have those books available to students. They've also been helping to run some different reading groups with children and to be able to also work with them in an innovation center and a maker space kind of way to help enhance either design thinking, building, and some other activities that they might do related to literacy.
Okay, but how has that changed?
So from the past, it changes the frequency at which they're interacting with students, I would say, the most. It changes the, the number of interactions and the type of interactions that they have with students. So the frequency is greater, and their interactions with students is beyond read aloud and only helping them find books one time a week.
I would add too that in seeing the students at Pacific Sky, the interaction with the library media specialist there has really, first of all, they are very much appreciated of the, of the direct access to books. They're all over the school. They still, it looks like a library, only it's in a lot of different places throughout the school. And so you'll have, you know, pod, you'll have, you know, one big area with lots of books. And the other thing that they talked about is the, how they really enjoy the book clubs that the library, that the library media specialist leads. So actually, they're interested around, you know, in a type of book. She reads a book club, they meet regularly with her. It just really expands, and as you said, the kinds of opportunities and the number of types of contacts they have with the actual library and the specialists, rather than thirty minutes, once every week or two sometimes. So are they actually?
This is, this is Catherine. I remember when the site opened and went on tour, and I was really excited, and I shared that with you, that this idea of having the books all over and the, the kids can access them more readily and with, like, thorough frequency. It seemed like if it has gone well at that site, how will this work environmentally at a different site? We have these spaces that are, you know, sort of have been used as libraries. How would we distribute books the way we've done in the women's guy?
So I would say that that plan is still a plan in process. I will tell you that when we look at our different school sites, there are different environmental considerations to, to look into. What I will say, when you did visit at the beginning of the school year, feedback from our students has been, you know, that they really enjoy access to a decentralized library. They have said things like, they look at choosing a book as an adventure because they get to be in different parts of the school while they're choosing their book. Their access is greater, and so they appreciate the autonomy of being able to do that on their own. And so I do think as we are looking at a new school build, it's part of our conversation there, and as we're looking at some of our current environments, thinking about, school environments, thinking about what is the potential that we have to create that greater opportunity for access for our students.
And are there any changes to the actual position of the actual goal or during the role?
No, not in this type of.
How many libraries, is there one in each site?
Yes, we have one in each site. We're in the process of hiring. We still currently have one vacancy across our district that we're working to hire. But yes, there currently is one for every school site. And then to your question as well, but this is also then, we, this will then be some of the new responsibilities that our current staff will continue to do. So this isn't going to displace any of our current employees having these new job descriptions.
So to me, you know, sometimes we have job descriptions on the consent agenda, which are items that are, you know, just slight shifts in some industrial job, for example, which, you know, would be appropriate in a consent agenda. To me, when there's a job description on the agenda that connects to a programmatic change, that rises to the level of an agenda item where we get an update on the programmatic change, and then the job description change is just, you know, part of that. So I'm not really comfortable with it being, you know, in a consent agenda in this case. I still don't feel like I have the whole picture of the situation, which we can.
I, I agree with you on that.
Any questions? So I guess I would ask the question, where do we go from here? If we feel we want either more discussion or changes or, or lack of change in it, what would be the next best step? But I, I understand that if we were not to approve it, what would be the next, you know, step for staff to, you know, give us pause or confidence in the larger picture?
And we'd be happy to gather additional information. We would be able to bring this item back as an additional item, as a separate item as well on a future agenda.
Oh, great.
Do you just want to bring that right next to it? Or do you want to vote on that?
I, I will pass. Are there any reasons to take a motion?
That's fine. So if you'd be able to bring a second. I mean, I did have one more question about it, it's just made a little work, I'm not going to talk about it now. Alison, you had the benefit of being at the school where this is, and that everyone had experienced at other schools. So it's been, in response to, I guess one of the comments is like, will, will students have less access to books or having noticed that they had more access, or they haven't, or able? And you talked about it a little bit, but what is your experience that you see of access? Because it's, you feel like they would give less access to books and less access to education?
Sure, so I would say compared to my previous student site, the number of books in our collection were just the same. So it's not fewer books, it's not more books, it's a similar-sized book collection. Again, students had more frequent access. So our students were able to check out books in the beginning of the day or at a time within their school day where they couldn't access those books. They were able to do it on their own. They have a lot of autonomy over choosing a book, returning it when they were ready, checking out a new book. Our library media specialist was always available to also work and talk with students if they had input, helping to create, you know, just some resources for what kind of books we like, book suggestions, helping to submit information about what books they'd like to see in the collection as well. So providing more student voice within that process and the important role that the library media specialist plays in helping to make sure that our students' voices are heard in that space.
Thank you, Alison. So look forward to your interpretation about this program and the library media specialist. Moving on to Seven to Nothing, so we're going to Eight Point One, Board Information, Demographics, and Involvement with Mr. Cameron, what's your bill answer?
All right, so good evening, President, Mark, Members of the Board, and Superintendent of the Board. So again, Chris and I today are happy to share an update on our demographics and involvement for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And so what we're going to do for us today is to briefly summarize the information that was able to be shared from the week before during our July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three special board meeting. We'll, like, very briefly review again the process of enrollment forecast, how it had the budget implications, and talk about also the corresponding facility implications. Then as well, direction from the board, who are also going to be sharing new information regarding to how that impacts the budget, given updated enrollment numbers as far as where we are as of today, and also looking at revisiting those facility implications. And then we'll wrap up with sharing our considerations and our next steps.
So as Ryan shared, we'll be going over the, some of the information from the July nineteenth meeting. And just a little bit of context for that meeting. We held a special board meeting considering new information and in an effort to continually analyze demographics and enrollments, and then practically share decision-making. We went to, of course, to continue with this to a responsible budget and transparent communication. So bringing forward the updates that we brought forward in July allowed us to start taking steps in that direction. As we shared that meeting, there are three major variables that come into enrollment forecasting when you work with demographic forecasting. First, our birth rates by zip code. This is looking at incoming kindergartners, because you don't have those students in our district at this point. We're looking at data sets that will help us to predict what would our incoming kindergarten cohorts look like. We then look at cohort survival factors. This is a rate at which we either increase or decrease in the number of students from year to year after they enter our seventh kindergarten to sixth grade. What do we see as a cohort survival factor or cohort survival rate? A rate of a hundred percent, which just means that we kept the same number throughout, or it may go above, it may go below in each district. And then there are student yield factors. And as that Floyd talked about, there's development in the district. And we look at that development, and we, what type of a student yield factor might be have for different types of developments. That then generates a number of students. You might expect to increase the district overall enrollment from that development over time. So that comes from looking at permits that are full and potential timelines for development, and then projecting out when might a number of units come onto online and then impact the district going forward. And the first slide we shared, the first main data point we shared at the last meeting on the nineteenth was looking at birth rate data. And so this is the birth rate data that we have. As we shared, when we look at the total birth rates there, as you see in the base year, there was five hundred and sixty. That was for last school year, the twenty, twenty. That was for last school year, the 2022, 2023 school year. And then the birth years, we start with the birth year. Students are born, we would expect that five years later, they would enter our system kindergarten. And then we have the total births. So as you can see, the base year was the 2022, 2023 school year, last school year, 560 births. This year, 625 births was a high watermark. So that 625 births was the highest we had seen since 2018 school year, so over the last five years. As you can see, it's the highest that we see going forward. And as we shared in our conversations with our demographers, they are not seeing birth rates go up. In fact, we've seen them go down a little bit. So we wouldn't expect to see a birth rate at this level in the near future. When we are using birth rates, and there are a couple of ways that you calculate, and the two main ways that you calculate would be a capture rate, what percent of those births would we expect to become kindergartners? The other way is to look at those birth rates compared to the current year and say if we have 500 birth rates last year and this year we're now 110, then we expect 10% more students. So there are two main ways. And so we'll look at those two main ways as we go through. The other item that really impacts our projections right now is cohort survival rate. As we said, that is from kindergarten once they enter our system through sixth grade, what do we expect to be the increase or decrease of students year to year? And in our district, we have a strong program. We have a highly recognized district. And contrary actually to what you typically see, we have a slight increase year over year. And so you'll note that from K to six, we have a district wide 3% increase that we're seeing, 103% cohort survival, so 3% more than we would see coming in. And you'll note that the only grade level change that we have seen in this last couple of years where we have a consistent decline in fifth to sixth, and as we shared, we do know that we have students who will enter private school and for middle school, and that often starts in sixth grade. So we've traditionally seen a little bit of a decrease in fifth to sixth grade as some of our students move on into a private school system. So then that gets us to what is an enrollment projection. And as we shared with the board when we came last time, we have estimates. And this estimate that we have here is the projection that we were looking at. It looks at a capture rate of 76%, which as we show up here is the capture rate average we saw from 2015 to 2022. We have had some dips in capture the last two years, but we also had the continuation of pandemic impacts. We had pandemic, we had launch. We then had still masks in some spaces and concerns in the, in the community. As we move into 2023, we have moved beyond the pandemic and we look at a lot of the metrics outside of schools. And so there was an expectation, not just in our district, but in many spaces, that as we are getting back to normal, this would be the year that you truly get back to normal. What that would have looked like with this long-term capture rate average would be so 475 students in this school year. Again, this was sort of the the gale weather, the the large class that we may be getting. And in looking at it, we did not, we have not received that 475 students. And that was really what triggered, looking at where we were, us to come back to the board and have some conversation about what are we seeing and what might that be?
So then we also shared what our current state was as of July 17th. So as of July 17th, as Chris was saying, we were anticipating a higher capture rate and a higher number of students we were anticipating coming to enroll in our schools for the 2023, 2024 school year. And as of July 17th, at this point, they were not materializing. And so we had, as of that, we had a total of 349 kindergarten students enrolled. One of the other pieces of analysis that we did is recognizing that the enrollment window continues to stay open through summer until the start of school. We also went back and looked to figure out approximately how many students would, can we reasonably expect to continue to enroll? And so for the last two school years, we averaged an additional 37 students would come to register and would come to show up after July 17th. And prior to that, from 2017 to 22, we're seeing an average of 44 students. We also saw that we were projecting, again, if we continue on this current pace of 349 students and then anticipating on average between this mark in July to the start of school, we were then projecting approximately a kindergarten class of 390 students. And that 390 students is significantly lower than the numbers that we were anticipating coming through by all of our projections, by the information that we were, that we received in working through Davis Demographics. So one of the things that we were questioning was based on the fact that now we have two years of lower capture rates and the fact that we're seeing our numbers trending much lower this year and constituting a third year. We posed the question of are we beginning to see anything normal in terms of students we anticipate coming to our schools? Showing it another way, we then were able to capture. So looking at the 2019, 2020 column, that is showing five years previous to 2019, 2020, there were 582 students who were born. And then five years later, 504 of those students showed up. And so that would represent a capture rate of 86.6%. The following year in 2020, 2021, we then recognized a capture rate of 77.4%. But then over the 21, 22, 22, 23, and 23, 24, that is where we're seeing a pretty significant decrease in the actual capture rate of students, of kindergarten students who are coming into our, into our schools. So when we look across at the number of kindergarten students that have come between 2019, 20, to what we're anticipating at 390 births in school year, and that might be a little high, we're seeing then a decrease of over 100 students during that period of time within kindergarten. And then consequently, we also then are looking at a decrease of almost 400 students during that same period of time across the district as those cohorts continue to work through our system. As Chris said, we also anticipate these trends to continue for the foreseeable future and that we anticipate that we will continue to have a lower kindergarten capture rate, which would then impact district-wide enrollment. We, in our conversations with Davis, Davis Demographic, they've also told us some of their preliminary data, looking at the birth rates within 22, looking at the birth rates within 2023, that we're also still continuing to see a lower number of births within our footprint. So really, the students that we were anticipating to come are not materializing at this time. As we're trying to identify those reasons why, considering the pandemic, we definitely experienced a number of families who may have moved. Perhaps they had an opportunity to work remotely or as we're looking at the cost of living and identifying that folks may have moved through the time they were born five years ago until now. We also are, why do you want to note that the trends that we're seeing here within our district are in unity to Del Mar? The fact that two thirds of the districts across the state of California are also experiencing declining enrollment. And also I'll note that our K through 12 student population for the first time has dropped below 6 million for the first time. So these lower capture rates then have an impact on our district enrollment. So I'll turn that over to Chris.
So as I shared, there are a couple of ways that you could look at, well, there are a number of ways, but too, too many ways to look at the capture rate and how we might look at our kindergarten enrollment. And so this is, this is a way that we go back to our one slide, looks at the percent change from the base year. So when we look at the base year being that we had had a couple of, had had, had a couple of down years. So we started with a lower kinder rate. As Ryan said, we decreased by kindergarten, by approximately a little over 100 students. Then if you're counting from a lower base and you have a higher birth rate year, then you're going to end up with a lower kindergarten rate because we're not just capturing the average across the board. And so this method of determining kindergarten enrollment would have put us at 438 students. Now admittedly, this is higher than what we are seeing. So as we discussed at the, the meeting last week, we would like to look at this a couple of different ways. But this data also gave us a whole lot of pause because when we looked, we were looking at, we looked at the overall district impact over time. So if we looked at a lower capture rate, over time, that lower capture rate leads to a district-wide enrollment that could be down in the range of 3,400 students in the next five years. And that overall impact impacts programs across the district and space we have across the district. And so that was something that definitely led us to speak to the board. As we were looking at this and discussing with Davis Demographics, they also shared that about 90% of their clients had been expecting to see some bounce back and are also looking at adjustments in how they might calculate capture rates because they aren't seeing the bounce back that was expected to happen by this year. And so we are, as Ryan said, in a similar situation to districts around the state. If we had data similar to this, then we could be close to 3,400 students by 2028. That is approximately 1,000 students below our 2017, 2018 peak when we were over 4,400 students. This also means that we could be down a number of sections, obviously. And it equates to, if you look across the board, kindergarten classrooms that are consistently in the low 400s. And then if you look down the board in the red, where we look at our current enrollment, where we have higher enrollments in our upper grades, as those age out, we are going to see some capture rates and cohort survival rate that will increase year to year, but not to the level that will keep us in a range where we have 575 and 600 students. And so when we're replacing a 600 student class with 400, 450 student class, we will see some consistent decrease because we are not seeing the bounce back that we expected we might see this year. That then led us to look at what might the implications be for space? And so at this point, looking at this year, we have open rooms at most of our school sites. We talked a little bit about how our schools have varying needs and varying openings, and some schools have more or less, some schools have no openings this year. We also looked at what do we have for open kindergarten rooms with restrooms, thinking about impact to those spaces because they're a pretty particular and specific need. And so across the districts, we anticipate having four kindergarten classrooms with restrooms that will be open in this next school year.
So following sharing that information with the board, and the board gave us direction to do a couple of things. First of all, was directed district staff to review and some of those potential impacts and sustainability regarding the feasibility of what traditional, or excuse me, transitional kindergarten might look like. There are a lot of questions regarding the feasibility and the sustainability related to, if we were to implement transitional kindergarten, what might that look like? And then additionally, there was conversations about scheduling additional port workshops in order to then, as we now have new information, is it worth revisiting and talking about additional priorities for our districts?
So one of the items that the board asked back was integration with budgets and transitional kindergarten staffing. As we know, there are different requirements of transitional K staffing. We'll just note, we talked a little bit about new revenues or decreases in expenditure. And so with this decline in enrollment, while we won't have new revenues, the way that we end up with more flexibility here is we have a decrease in expenditure. So there then is cash or money that could be spent in some manner that may not be being spent in a way that we had budgeted for over the next three years. When we look at the cost for a K six section, so one of our K six sections for a K six multi-subject teacher is $143,000. Transitional kindergarten requires another adult in the classroom, and so we have an instructional aide, so that aide would cost $43,000. And that would give us a total cost for a TK section as $186,000. So K six would be 143, TK would be 186. And when you divide that out, then one TK class would be equivalent to the cost for 1.3 K six classes. And so we put this together because we also talked about how we had budgeted for a flat FTE or a flat full-time equivalent sections across. And it isn't a one-to-one comparison of if we have one extra section of a K six, then we could replace that with TK because it is more expensive. So we wanted to give some comparison to that.
Quick question, and how many students in that TK section? So we're talking to professional.
TK sections are capped at 12 to ones and a cap of 24 for the time being. In 2025, 2026, it will reduce to 10 to one with a combined with two adults. It could be 20 to one, 20 in a class with two adults. Thank you.
But just to clarify, and just so that I know, you're talking about 20 kids in each class?
Well, I'm just talking about sections. So if we opened a TK classroom, it might be fully staffed, that fully filled it 20. It might be that we had it at 18, but one section or one class.
Right, okay.
Sorry, good.
But the number of kids in both cases is the maximum 20? Because in the second scenario, the TK, you get the 1 to 10 ratio with two people, right? So it's not like the maximum number is different between these two kindergarten versus TK, right?
State of California allows us to go to 24 for two more years. Our district wouldn't go to 24, but the law allows 24, and then it will be 20. And it's capped, a hard cap of 20, starting in 25, 26.
So basically the same.
Basically.
Sorry, Catherine.
Yeah, Catherine?
I'm sorry, yeah. A question about the, the salaries or the total compensation cost for the, the $143,000, like what, what year teacher is that? Year one, year fifteen?
We're using the average. So we, we did an average, and this is what we used when we did the comparisons for the board at the first read in May. And so we're using an average teacher cost, and it's including all benefits. And it includes, you know, workers' comp. And so this is all costs combined for, for a, a staff member.
So what, what year range would that be for the average?
I, I'd have to look at what the year range is for the average. We just use the average, the average for our current staff.
Okay, so potentially if we're hiring, you know, like a, a pretty new teacher, this cost might be lower by a, by a little bit.
This could vary based on the, the teacher. That being said, it could be that a TK section has a current teacher that we place in that section. So we use the average because as we hire new staff, you know, they kind of fit in with the average. So we're really going to average out across all of the sections. There could be some variance, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I know we have combo classes in higher grade levels. Is it possible to do a TKK combo class?
It is, yes.
So in doing that, can we expand the number of TK participants?
Not necessarily. I mean, we still have the same staffing ratios. So I think that, I want to speak for Ryan, but I think that would really come down to the number of students in a space and whether we had, you know, maybe more financial, you know, just didn't have enough students to create some class, and then we end up with a combo is typically how that creates.
No, I understand that, but if, if we only have four empty classrooms, we wouldn't confine ourselves necessarily to four. If we have another classroom that has fewer students in the kindergarten class, we could put some TK into that class and expand the number of classes.
Is that a good idea, to combine TK?
I'll leave it to those that have that experience, but I'm just trying to, I mean, we have combo classes.
I would say potentially. I think that's something, you know, we would need to look at and evaluate a little bit, but potentially.
Are you, are you Chinese as a parent?
I mean, to me, TK is totally different curriculum from kindergarten. But that's why I think part of this is to understand what is the curriculum that a TK student would have. I don't think that it's just like a young kindergartner, it's totally different.
The reason for my question, and it could have been answered with a no.
It wasn't.
But it wasn't, so I.
Yeah, I, it's a good question.
And I'll go back to my theme from the other night to potentially answer that question. Is, are there other similarly situated districts that have tried combo TKK? And how's that worked, and what can we learn from it?
I know there are districts who have had combos. We have not had the time to investigate, impact, how that worked, and how it's going.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
And, and in my research that I've done, the district, most of the districts that have combos are very small districts, so it just doesn't make sense to have two teachers. So it's a matter of like, you know, five kids are in TK and five are in K. It's like really small number.
Yeah, that, that just speaks to programmatically how when you add, you know, consider adding a new program like TK, it's not just, you know, switch some more kids into a classroom. It's, it's trying to understand what is the curriculum, what is the plan for these kids, and having a comprehensive understanding of how it's implemented.
How would we let them continue on with the presentation? We'll come back to it.
So one of the questions that was asked last time was what potentially then would be those implications as far as how many TK classes potentially could we offer? And as Chris said, when we began budgeting for the. And as Chris said, when we began budgeting for this particular school year, we budgeted flat looking at enrollments. And so we budgeted at a total of a hundred and seventy-six K through six sections. As of today, and I'm giving very big caveats to saying that our numbers are continuing to change as we're getting enrollment, continuing to get enrollment, not just at kindergarten, but throughout the rest of our district, all through first through sixth right now. We currently are between one hundred and seventy-one and one hundred and seventy-three kindergarten sections again as of today. K through six, eighty-six sections. So what that would mean is in terms of that opportunity cost, in terms of planned expenses that weren't budgeted for, we currently have four, so to speak, K through six sections, which then would equate, using that one point three ratio of one of one TK class within represent the cost savings, so to speak, of a one point three FTE. Then that would open up for, those four open sections would represent three point one in TK. There was also a question about how can we then run our projections out for the out years? What does that look like in twenty-four, twenty-five? And so both the two members of the boards, we were also calling that sensitivity analysis. What might this look like if we're able to capture, if our capture rates come at this percentage versus a higher percentage as well? And so as we look at those out years for twenty-four, twenty-five, that would be additional time and work that we would still need to be able to pursue working with this demographics at this time. That is absolutely something that is on our list, but at this point, we haven't had that opportunity to run those different levels of analysis of what this might look like with different projections of students coming in. A question was asked about with our current status quo, where we are right here today, what would that look like with our current staffing for enrollment? And so as of July twenty-fourth, so we'll be back to Monday, what we would be looking at then is a district-wide average in kindergarten right now of seventeen point three students per classroom. And then you can see those averages throughout. And as a reminder, we have, as based on our contract with our teachers association, we have a class size limited, our K through three of twenty-two. And our upper grades, while we have different language within our contract, we have four directions, a staff at twenty-five to one at our upper grades. And so you'll see these current numbers still, but nicely or comfortably below those upper thresholds.
Just a quick point of clarification, this reflects on the teacher side, the departures over the summer. And so this is the actual real number of teachers that we have.
Correct, this is the real number, this is every teacher with a spot at this point in time, correct.
And then finally, there was a request to look at facilities implications with Delmar Heights School opening, Delmar Hills. And so try to paint the picture of what Delmar Heights School opening will bring to the district, and then a little bit about Delmar Hills Academy's modernization. And so the opening of Delmar Heights, fully open for next school year, will bring us twenty-one K-six classrooms. That will include three kindergartens with restrooms. That brings our district total to twenty-nine. I did note that we do have classes that are used for our ECPC program and our specialized preschool that are within that twenty-nine. And so I, but we wanted to paint the picture of the total number we have here, and then we can, you know, make decisions. We can give information from there. We have two SDC classrooms, a learning lab, three C plus classrooms, and three ASP classrooms at Delmar Heights School. Delmar Hills Academy's modernization, we still anticipate starting that in twenty-twenty-four. And then I've had it through twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six because as we know, we have some discussions to have around phasing, and we'll have some discussion with a board workshop as well, and looking at some of the next steps there. If students are off campus, there's a reduction of capacity in the district, obviously, because we're taking students from that campus and we're putting them into some open classrooms in other sites during the instruction. If they stay on campus, that obviously does not reduce any capacity anywhere else. So there's still some question marks there as to how that will impact district-wide over that period of time. Once completed, that will add two more kindergarten classrooms with restrooms as well because we have designed in to put restrooms into kindergarten classrooms there that don't currently have restrooms. So that would increase that district total by two as well. And with that, we will add considerations in this step.
Yeah, so as Chris said, we do have some additional work to do with the direction of the board. So first of all, we do need to go back, we reached out to data demographics, but we do want to go back and be able to update and revise their forecasts as we look at twofold for that data demographic information. First of all, is using a force of regular customer base purposes, being able to then determine district-wide enrollment, looking at capacity needs. But additionally, now we would look at it with that different lens about being able to assist us in those decisions, providing the board with information necessary about trying to then reasonably forecast the, what capacity might look like for a sustainable TK program moving forward. We also have a considerable amount of communication to stay out of. So we need to be able to have communication and provide and gather input from our community partners. So that would include being able to talk about current parents, talking about prospective parents. But I will note to this point, we have had no conversations with our teachers. And additionally, standing here as the assistant superintendent of HR, I will also say that we have not had any conversations at this point with DMCTA regarding this. If we were to begin a new program, as we're talking about in such as class sizes and other pieces, we would have a duty to negotiate with DMCTA to talk about the impacts and the effects of starting a new program, which will allow us, we would need to be able to negotiate with our teachers regarding class size, valuation, or things of that nature that typically fall within a contract. And so that would be some of the work that we would need to continue to do. Doug, as you're asking questions about feasibility of combination class or even these other, as far as what, how a TK program might look like, we definitely need time still to determine what that appropriate curriculum looks like. We pride ourselves in our district about being able to provide the absolute best experiences for our kids, for our families. And so we need additional time to be able to determine what is that appropriate curriculum that's going to match our district's vision, philosophy for how we want to engage and educate our students in partnership with our community. So it would be questions looking at materials, what does that program look like? And then also looking at what might that impact be, would that affect, and how to incorporate to make sure that our specialized students are more cautious than others? We would then need to be able to communicate to our first development to communicate about a communication program. How do we identify registration for our families? How do we then identify a selection process? My charge would then be, if you know, Catherine, as you were mentioning, would then be making sure that we're able to then hire the instructional staff for this program. Or we would also make, if we were to move forward with TK, we would also make that position open to any of our current staff members who might be interested in moving into a TK position and then turn actively those positions. And so the staffing considerations will be important for us. And then the board also provided the desire to be able to have additional conversations regarding looking at our budget, looking at vision workshops, so identifying, you know, September, Friday, and Friday. We can have a conversation related to measuring MM facilities, and then having an opportunity in October to discuss our budgeting and issue vision priorities for our district. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
I have another question. I would imagine the TK-aged kids that are at the ECDC would no longer be at the ECDC and would evolve or move towards the transitional kindergartners. My question is, those kids are in a classroom now, and does that get us any more classrooms if they move out of the ECDC?
Yes, we have a couple of classes that actually fall that are being used by various ECD programs. So if our older students were in that program, then that would potentially add another classroom that actually falls that we have available to use as a TK classroom.
That twenty-nine included twenty-nine or thirty-one in the health, is that?
Includes them all. Yes, included all of them in our total. So when we look at the out years for the whole facilities, looking just at this next year, we definitely would have one, and that actually falls, we would potentially have two. So we didn't keep that, we didn't take that into account, we didn't, but I gave you this spreadsheet that showed one that actually falls. We took that into account as a definite for a, an open space. We opened it, and there might be potentially flexibility for the facility.
So that's one of the four, we don't add another one?
No, we don't add another class, got you.
As far as the special ed group, how many potentially join in a TK class?
We don't have that number available right now, but the, there would be an impact to the current special ed preschool program that serves four-year-olds. And they would still be eligible to receive the special ed services that they receive currently, which would just be receiving it through the TK program versus in our special ed preschool program.
Yeah.
I have some questions for my mic, so I'll kind of put it right here, it starts not working on me. Yeah, I don't know, that's, that's something, I'll put it there. All right, we're good. Nope, that again.
One more time.
Yeah. I have like five, five mic problems. All right.
I have three that are actually all on.
I know, I feel like, like I'm in front of me or something like that. So I had some, just some general questions, kind of following up from last week, and it was kind of what we're going to talk about for the day. I think, and I had an opportunity to chat talk with some people during the course of the week. I think one of the things that people are a little bit confused about is, especially before, is about financing was difficult in order to do a TK program. And I know you kind of talked about it a little bit, but it did sound like the, what's actually happening in sense of that there's no change in revenues, but expenditures are decreasing. So there, while we may not get additional money for TK from the state, we are, we will have additional money in our budget. And where does that come from?
So we budgeted over this coming, this fiscal year, which we're just starting, and the two future fiscal years, to have a flat number of sections of K-six program. So we had a hundred and seventy-seven that we budgeted for. As we see kindergarten coming in significantly lower than we expected. We expected that to offset in this year, and then set us up so we would be fairly flat over the next couple of years. Seeing the kindergarten home come in as low as it is this year, and then that would make us infer that despite we becoming low again next year, we will have a combination of lower kindergarten classes with the, replacing higher upper grade classes. So overall, our number of sections will reduce. And if we are budgeting for a hundred and seventy-seven sections, and our sections go down to say a hundred and seventy-three, then we have four sections that are budgeted for that we can pay for. We don't have any revenue, but we don't have that expense. If we continue to go down, then there might be a couple of more sections that we have budgeted for that we're not paying for in the next year. And so if we see a decline in enrollment, but we budgeted for a flat number of sections, then the difference between what we're paying for and what we budgeted before will steadily rise a little bit over the next couple of years. And that, I can't give you an estimate necessarily to how much it will rise, and that's where we would like to do some work with data demographics to get a clearer impact on what will happen to enrollment over the next two years. That would give us a stronger position from which to tell you what we believe the total enrollment and the total number of sections of those two years to be, which would allow us to say, if that's a hundred and seventy sections, and we expect there to be a hundred and seventy-seven, then we have seven sections. And that's the difference that a lot of it provides more, is that about money that would be spent.
Is it fair to say that you, when you say you budgeted for it, it means there's teachers that of course are supposed to be teaching those classes? And when they, you don't need those sections anymore, those teachers are some, gone somewhere. And I think what you mentioned last week is that those teachers, by natural attrition, have left. And so by not replacing them, if you don't replace them, there's an additional pool of money. And would it be fair to say that that's kind of where there's additional, some additional wiggle room there?
Yes, and, yes, just purely from a perspective of where does the, the extra disposable income come from? Is from, yes, we have a reduction in the number of staff that are needed to fund those sections, and therefore that difference between how many we need to fund the sections and how much funds they give appropriate for it is what money we have that we're not saying we need to prioritize.
And to kind of clarify. Yeah, hold on a second. Yeah, and to clarify, so would, would there be any kind of difference in terms of the regular program? If there are, so you currently then would have additional funds, but the regular classes would still operate as they would be normal if there's no change in scheme? If we're to say like add a program or anything, or we're just basically right now, what you're telling me is essentially that we had additional funds to set if we continue to increase enrollment, or enrollment continues to decrease? Okay, so there's no, you have an opportunity then to just add something, and there wouldn't be any kind of changes to, to current programming? There wouldn't be any kind of changes necessarily that would affect scheme, for instance? Like if we really add TK, it wouldn't add, wouldn't affect scheme, it wouldn't affect class sizes?
Without saying how big of a TK program we add.
Sure, sure.
That's why I think when we gave the direction, you know, starting with what is the surplus, what is the range of surplus funds that we have had in funding enrollment to use that? Could be the first step in understanding the information. I mean, just kind of to me, when you're doing the sensitivity analysis, what's the area is capture rate goes back up. Birth rate is birth rate, and that's just slowly, like, it's tapping down. But the capture rate goes back up, and the decline in capture rate we're seeing the last couple of years is anomalies, pandemic, pandemic, the economy or something. You know, we should still consider what happens if it goes back up. So I mean, I think that'll give us the range of like how much extra funding is left over. And as you can see, as I compare to the positive, all the scenarios of a TK program, well, TK program, partial TK program, and also currently looking at what other things I want to do with that funding if, if we have it available. Increase team plus, and not saying we should, but you know, look at the different parents the district may have that have to be your plan, and just compare, which is all laid out more shortly.
Can I say?
I'd like to jump in here, if I may. Yeah, so I think the muscle is just kind of a, you know, highlights the difference between a basic aid district and an ADA district. We're not, we're not dependent on enrollment. We're receiving the same amount of money regardless of how many students are attending. So when our enrollment decreases, we basically have more money, and that's what's happening right now. And it's been happening for quite a number of years. I also want to stress that this is, this is all, okay, fine, our, you know, we're seeing the light of enrollment. Really down this year, so now we're talking about TK. But TK is being delivered in districts across the state, up in other states. You know, the majority, ninety-plus percent of basic aid districts, we are basic aid, are delivering TK. They're able to do it with the dollars that they receive in property taxes. And so while I, you know, I understand your, your guys' appreciation for money, your cost projections and enrollment projection, I also think it's really like a matter of let's deliver the instruction, the curriculum that the rest of the four-year-olds in our state are given access to. We are falling behind in that regard. We are just as capable financially and in all other regards to be able to provide this program. So that's something I'd like to say, and I think it's absolutely possible for us to begin from our business school year. I think that we have four open classrooms, and to have them just sitting there and not filling that with potential four-year-olds is just such a, such a shame, I wouldn't want to see that.
I, I agree with you, Catherine. I don't know that, what I've heard in the past is that there's any kind of effect long-term by not having TK. I don't know if that's necessarily, I remember having a workshop, you know, that there was no real effect on future grade levels by not.
I completely disagree with that, having announced that we were doing this in the past, and also the person who, who, you know, you know, promoted that, that idea, I always did this, yeah. I think that there, like, what is the, the special ed population might be joined in with the general ed population? That's, that's one, a main incentive of having TK. And I've spoken with superintendents from Northern California Council District who have implemented the program despite their history for years. And they have said to me that they're. And they have said to me that they're revamping their kindergarten programs because the kindergartners that are entering after having participated in TK are so much better prepared. So to say, oh yeah, we, we, you know, we've done analysis and our sixth graders have reached the benchmark despite never participating in TK. But what are these benchmarks that were, you know, we, in the past were, were, were giving them? I mean, let's, let's go further. Let's, you know, look beyond these antiquated benchmarks and give our kids the benefit of TK so that they can become even more capable students, more human. So, I mean, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't like that premise. Um, I've heard it before and I just, I just agree with it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm supporting you, Catherine, but I, I, what I had heard and what has been provided to us, uh, it doesn't necessarily reveal all the things that, uh, you're saying. And I think it's a difficult thing to, uh, to quantify because our district with regard to those that have children at that age level are different than many other districts that have children. And so it's, it's hard to compare apples to apples. Um, but I don't want you to think that I'm not supportive of what you're saying.
So I'll just weigh in. I don't know if, or, I mean, like, I believe in TK. I think it's something that's necessary. I think the rest of the state is offering it. And it's something that we should be offering as well to be able to keep it in line with the rest of other, uh, districts. It's not something that we shouldn't be sitting our hand, on our hands at some point, just hoping that, you know, it'll happen at some point. But we should advocate for, we should work on it. Um, and I think that's been clear. We've always kind of said that. It's something that as long as we can do it financially responsibly, it's something that we should do. Now, with that said, that's kind of my concern is I don't, uh, looking forward, how can we do this in a sustainable manner that we run a program that's going to be long-term, that we don't just, we're not rushing, we're not jumping into it, but it's something that we can continue offer a high quality, Delmar level quality program that will be here for years to come. So it's not something that we just offer and then we, for some reason, reach a point where like, wait, we got a little bit expensive. And, and now we have to pull it back. So, you know, I want to make sure that those that were clear that we can do this for a long term. Um, and, you know, with regards to doing it this year, I, I would be, I, I'd be very confused and it's a, a little bit difficult for me. It's, um, I am a parent myself of a four-year-old, so I currently am the parent of something that would be beneficial, uh, of this program would benefit. I have a lot of questions, like the questions that we're asking here. What would the curriculum be? Where will it be? How will be set? You know, I, I, there are a number of questions that I would have as a parent, um, in, in the span of, if we're to talk about two weeks or whatever it is before school starts. And I don't know that I would be able to have those questions answered for myself to be comfortable to, uh, move forward in that time. So I'm not, I don't know how, if we were to offer this program, how many students, uh, or parents and students would be able to take advantage of it. Because it's a lot of moving parts and how you communicate to the public at this point. You know, and, and reach them and, and get all their questions answered. So I'm concerned, there's a concern for me that if we offer this program right now, not fully fledged, not fully, thought about and, 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 uh, ready for, for, uh, to be rolled out, that it may not actually be successful. That you may, you have, may have people that may be unhappy because of it. It may not, um, either their liking or their expectations. Um, so that is a concern for me. I, I think that this, this, uh, district is able to do high quality work. I think you, you know, we've seen that in a short period of time, they can do it. Um, but I still, you know, I have, I have concerns and questions about it.
I mean, just sit and say, I have questions and not give direction to get answers.
Oh, well, I think.
Well, we've given, only clear directions to get answers.
But I mean, you have a number of questions that weren't asked of the staff. So I think maybe we should put forth to them a, a list of things that they need to know. I, I agree, but I don't know that, I don't know that two weeks is, is enough time to get the answers to those questions and put a curriculum together and make sure that everybody is on board with it. And it's just not ready for primetime. But, um, you know, I think we need to have a plan in place and, and maybe a date is certain when it starts and, and so let's start that ball rolling down the hill.
And, and just, just that, you know, I mean, I know at my, my children's preschool that they attended, you know, we've been going there for, I don't know, six, seven years. There's no, there's no spots at that preschool. There's no spots at any preschool. There, there's way much of preschools all around. So to say that there's not an immediate need and there aren't families who wouldn't jump at the opportunity to enroll in TK, I, I look at it from a completely different, um, perspective than you are. I think that people will be felt easily.
I, I didn't hear anybody say that there wasn't an immediate need. It's just a matter of, you know, giving something that we could necessarily hang our name on.
Well, I think we were able to roll out a pretty amazing, um, program during COVID and, you know, Dr. McClure was able to keep our schools open and offer virtual, um, options for families who wanted to remain at home. And I think that this district has a lot of smart people that can figure things out quickly. Um, there's, there's, you know, certainly TK qualified teachers out there in pretty much every other district, minus a few other, um, district, districts around us. And even our staff who are, are, you know, eligible to, to teach. I know that when we had TK, um, you know, there was, I think it was a lot of beach and there was a, a Delmar Times article written about one of the teachers up there. And I think she's still in the district because she ran such an amazing program. I mean, people know what they're doing. They know how to teach this. So I'm optimistic.
So your slide considerations and next steps, I think, is a good starting point for some of the questions that we have. If, for me, the big chunks are what are the demographic trends and what kind of, you know, upside opportunity we have with revenue, dirt sensitivity analysis that we talked about. The second piece, and maybe this is envisioned for the, the last bullet of budget and visioning workshops. If we have a certain amount of money that we put toward priorities in the district, does a hundred percent go to TK? Does less than a hundred percent go to TK? And others, other priorities, I'd like to understand what other priorities are on the table in addition to TK. So we can figure out the, the way to right-size the, whatever initiative you recommend. And then focusing in on TK, I think there are a lot of questions here and we can, I think we need to develop them in, in more detail. For example, what are the needs of the community? You know, what parents are ready to avail themselves of TK? And it's the same question you just dealt with, with kindergarten enrollment. And what's the predicted number of, of children that we would want to serve with TK this year, next year, and so forth. And then of course, just, you know, the details, you know, it's a change management opportunity. With the pandemic, we had to do it really, really fast. Uh, now there's not any sense of urgency, but there's a, there's an appetite, there's an opportunity. And so thinking through the change management, and, and I go back to the concept of reaching out to other districts and ask them what worked well, what didn't work well, so that we can have a faster path to implementation and also a quality path to implementation. So that we're delivering a service that's at the level that we expect at Delmar Union.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Here at nine point one, we're reporting facilities update with those outlets.
Good evening. Um, Fort President Block, um, Fort Triskey is in the current department cabinet. My pleasure to attend in July, facilities, um, update. Um, I'll be reporting on the Delmar Most Academy Modernization Project, the Delmar High School Rebuild and the current future career upgrades that we've been, um, looking at over this past summer. So for the Delmar Most Academy Modernization Project, we continue to investigate the phasing options, whether we do the project with students on campus or off campus. And then, uh, continue to work with the construction document development. Um, one thing we've had to adopt here too, um, is update because of the timing of our geo-tech report. And then in September, we will be bringing, um, support, uh, during the facilities workshop at all costs for the, the project. Um, depending on the, the phasing options that we, um, get a direction to before. Next is the Delmar High School Rebuild Project. Um, I'll be trying to view some of the, um, project highlights that have been happening and also the, some pictures of the project. Um, as you know, we started March, uh, March sixth of fiscal year. Um, currently, um, throughout the week, there's anywhere between fifteen, seventeen workers working on the site daily. Um, concrete board, uh, plumbers, electrical, framing, um, there's a lot of steelwork coming up. And we'll see on the next slide some of the additional work that's been happening over, um, dozens of our last facilities update. Next is the Slab One Grade for the Admin Building Innovation Center in ER. Continued framing of all the classroom buildings and all of the Slab One Grade for the Classroom Building Assessment. There you can see some of the progress that's been happening, um, framing, as I mentioned, there's still work that still gets, um, that's being put up and being connected into the classroom building and the admin buildings. That bottom picture on the left, I'll, I'll highlight on the next slide. As you can see that, that frame, our architect is pretty excited, um, about it. That's our innovation center. If you take back to the office, did a little workshop rendering at the bottom, you can see where the, the innovation center, they just wanted to highlight. Um, he was super excited seeing it up, um, and, you know, ordered the foundation and stuff and, you know, he started knocking with the district. So that's very close to that, how exactly he was and support of it for us to, you know, visualize it as once it'll be completed. When the school opens up next, next week or next week. And then next is our financial security, um, system, uh, upgrades. Um, we did vet and review multiple systems this summer. And we just selected a system, uh, one of the things that we wanted to like make sure we had is the availability of, availability of the system, the lead times and the install, something that we could, uh, install and have ready to be available across our school sites. So the system we selected, it's got a current lead time once we, um, we're curated, it's about two weeks. And then we anticipate an install within three or four weeks. And then, um, they're pretty confident they can install one to two systems for school sites per, per day. Then it does move pretty quickly once we have all the components in, um, in, in our system. And if that, um, is there any questions?
Thank you, Catherine. I was just going to ask, can you chat talk about the front entry? Is this what they end up like? What, uh, you know, what, what purpose is it and, you know, how does it?
Yeah, so they have the facility here blocking the front door. Um, it'll have a camera mounted on the outside and then we'll have a monitor at the desk in the front desk. Um, with two stations. So in case, you know, where the back end curtain is not available, you know, the person can see. And there's access to be able to open up the, the front door of the school site.
So is it kind of like a buzzer system or if I walk into the front door, then I, like, what's in?
Yeah, you'll, you'll press a button and then, um, your, your, then your camera will probably, um, the person's desk and then they'll be able to see. And community feedback as well to see why you're logging into the school. So then, um, release the, the door.
Based on what is the, what's the front that's high weather amount to the car?
I think our, from, just knowing our community, they, they know that it's parent, they, uh, sure there are those many policies in question that, that they'll ask to give up. For these and all the, the, our business.
And we, when we look at this, we will be, uh, looking at how we can, we're going to have to allow in a bulk of people because they're coming for school business. And so, uh, we have worked with our staff and we've worked with, with police departments, looked at how we can, uh, make sure that we're vetting. But there's, uh, really going to be a process of just the person looks who poses a threat is the, the way that we'll be able to, uh, not let them in and then we would call law enforcement to, uh, take a next step with them.
So basically you let them ready and let they look like they're having an attack? If I understand this correctly, this is true.
Well, yes, and when you think about the ability to, uh, go through a questioning process, we have to have legitimate reasons for being on the site. There is some assessment of why they're there and then we, uh, be allowing them in because it still is a place of school business and there are many reasons why somebody might come. So if somebody is coming, they have legitimate reasons to be on the school site. They have, uh, a, a way to answer the question that is, is not concerning. Then we would let them in to be a part of the, um, business they had to do with the school.
IDs, things like that, is that what you're trying?
We ID everybody when they come in. We go through the rapture system. So we'll be doing that as we, um, do our entry process at our single point.
After they're inside?
I would, I would hate to have somebody at the desk say that person's shady and so on and so on, just because they're wearing a certain kind of clothing or something like that. So I, I, I mean, it is based on how you look or I, I just?
No, I didn't say it's based on how you look because we're not going to discriminate against people because they look a certain way. It is based upon the answers you give to, uh, why you're coming to this school site. So these are all great questions and we're in the business of education. And so I think about educating the parent community when we have a new system so that they have confidence. They know about it. They know how it's being implemented. It's about educating the staff of what the standard protocols are. And, uh, because people are just going to have to adjust to, to a new way of doing things. So, you know, where my questions will be and that will be the answer right now. What's our process for educating parents at the beginning of the year of what they're going to see when they haven't seen this before? And I might also go into this level of detail of questions of what's the protocol for the people who are operating the door? And what kind of training, you know, will they be receiving in the beginning and maybe updated training? That will give everybody confidence that we're implementing it in a smart way and everybody's educated about what the processes are.
I mean, I just want to make sure something that we're doing patches for show, but it could actually might help. And so they help us understand more about that.
Chris, are we able to get maybe at the beginning of the year, or whether this is implemented, names of people who, uh, from the community? I know that my wife runs a camp and they have lists of names of people who, their kids are. It's not me, it's, it's so and so and so and so and so. So we could have a computer base where somebody gives a name even though we may not recognize them through the camera or something like that, just monitoring, be it like that or something like that as an excellent model.
And we have that, we collect that for each of our, um, students. And so they, they're, you know, we do have some of those systems. And there is some training that will be done to make sure that our front office staff, uh, Jenny works with our staff each year on training and updating, um, the processing protocols for our school safe, safe safety procedures. But yes, we have that as a, as a part of the process.
But again, that's once they've come inside the building.
No, I'm talking about understanding outside. Oh, we, we have access to, the front office staff have access to it.
So if someone gave a name and I wasn't named on the list, okay, can I come in?
I think what Chris said is, you know, what the, the industry is used for, someone poses a, a circle for it.
Does the county office event have protocols on this?
Protocol specifically on blocking the door or a door system?
Uh, no, I, well, all of it on that many, um, you know, using the system and even effectively have a screen that's for who, who is potentially threatening and just how to operate, like, procedures of how to operate on person.
There is no protocol specifically about who poses a threat. The idea behind the door, um, is that this is a layer of mitigation, one extra step that could provide additional. The idea behind the door is that this is a layer of mitigation, one extra step that could provide additional safety. As we've talked about before, there isn't really a profile of a person that we're looking for. And as Chris mentioned, we have people who come in many times throughout the day and in the process of school business. And so the, the role of the office staff would be to determine the reason for the person to be there. And then to vet that person once they're in the building.
And Dr. O'Quair said that it would have to be somebody who poses an acceptable threat. So then what does that mean? And then we know what it means. Does that understand that anybody who doesn't propose, you know, have an acceptable threat is gonna be admitted?
Like you said, and as Jenny's saying, it's a layer approach. So that's the first layer is to basically see if the reason should be there and propose, present as a threat. And then the next layer, which we do have very, you know, layers of the approach already, to see what is your business here? And wrap your unit to make sure that you don't have that type of record or, or.
So this system is kind of like a ring doorbell. But assuming it's substantially more money than a ring doorbell would be. And I guess my question is why everyone's spending it to make escape doorbells and do the same thing?
But the difference from the, the general doorbell, this system has the capability of unlocking and locking the door from the person's desk or the front office. And then we'll have the capability to, if we, if you have to keep up to it, if a staff member, and they leave, it'd be activated and added and, you know, employees has, you know, first turnover. Or move school sites for us.
We have the market order here.
Does this system also have cameras as a part of it?
Rich, it does have a camera as a part.
Sorry, did you say it does not?
It does.
He, he said it does, if they do have cameras.
Okay, thanks, I was having a hard time hearing the, the voice.
And we'll, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna send one word approval, award of contract for a district-wide green team waste diversion education program. Mr. Delman.
Well, we begin, it's a lot of, for the board to do that. This evening, we are bringing a contract for a district-wide green team waste diversion education program. And I wanted to put a little bit up here, cause somebody explained a little bit of the background on how we got to do this and what some of our next steps look like. So green team is something that we have prioritized all of last year. We took on the universal meal program. We knew that there were likely to be some waste, there'd be more meals, there'd be more bug on in our lunch areas. And as we're doing some of the investigation, even in developing our central kitchen, we work closely with Incendius. And Incendius has done some work with green teams. So we do want to reach back out to them and work with them. And so in October, we went to the site visits, we did a report to the board. In November, we met with a couple of different organizations. So we had Island of Clean San Diego, we had BCK, who we ended up moving forward with, so we actually vetted a couple of groups. December, we had some preliminary meetings and the board approved the BCK contract for the Ocean Air pilot that we did. And then in January, that Ocean Air team kicked off. And then really worked throughout that year, as they shared with the board in May, the amazing work that they did. They really helped to develop a program as a pilot. So our goal always was to have a pilot at Ocean Air School. So almost a development program that we could move through to the rest of the district. One thing that we found as we went through that pilot process is how beneficial the work with BCK was to the students at Ocean Air School. And so we are bringing this because we, we knew that it was beneficial. In fact, as I went to the school and we taught the students, we, we asked them about their interactions with BCK and how it impacted what it was for them. And to a person, they talked about how, how much they learned, how much they've grown over it. And how they would highly recommend that other students in our district have the opportunity to work with BCK. Throughout this process, we had a huge number of staff consultants and it really went some time and effort into making sure that we could make this be successful at Ocean Air. I was a part of it, we had directors throughout my department. Tiana Barton was instrumental in it and being a part of it as both Director of Business Support Services and Director of Business Services. And she really helped us with her head things. Marley Adams was here tonight, was a big part of it as she came on board. Carlos was here and he was helping with, how do we deal with some of the waste? He was on site supporting them. And as Jamie Phillips came on board, Jamie was there and helping look at it from a food service. Krista Berdson was there, Ginny Pearson was there, we had Incendius supporting, and across the board, we had people who really came in and made this successful. And so what we are hoping to do is bring this to all of our school sites. And we're hoping that all of our school sites have the same experience, they can develop it so it's a little more site specific. And some of those things, they spoke to us in May about going through and, and looking at what is the impact of the waste at their site? Looking at what is happening with it. And then being able to give us feedback and give our food service feedback so we can make improvements will be really beneficial. So with that, we would ask the board for approval to move forward with BCK supporting all of our, all of our sites. And we included Ocean Air to have some support again to include new students. And we think that it would be beneficial for them to have a second year with it and be able to continue the work. So I haven't answered any questions and then we will.
Well, after seeing that presentation with, with Ocean Air, I, I, I would, I would hope that every other school would get as much out of it as they would saw. I'm a whole part of this.
I echo it from an educational perspective, what really impressed me, aside from the workflows and making things more efficient, is the study design. So you had elementary school children looking at a, at offices and designing a study, doing statistical analysis and making recommendations, which I sometimes can't see in high school or college students. So I think for all the good reasons that we saw as an outcome substantively, I think was also a great educational tool for our students. And that's why I definitely support them.
That's what, what they said. Yeah.
Yeah, could you talk about how, I, I love, I love the presentation at Ocean Air and I think it was a great program. I just just wanna know after the education, what is implementation look like? How can we keep this going and actually have this as part of our, you know, our waste management, our school site?
Absolutely, it's a great question and that's why we're, we're continuing at Ocean Air. What we found when we went to Incendius was that conservative ongoing effort is important. And so you need buy-in from site staff and you need buy-in from the students. And so having a continuous green team that stays involved, has students supporting students. That means that they are being involved and bought into this and then having staff support, having staff buy-in. So we bought in from a leadership level to the school site level. And then we want to give the support so our principals, who have a lot going on, can be bought into it, but also have the support to do this in a highly effective manner. And as Alan said, the educational benefits of it are really high quality. So we see this beautiful marriage between this educational opportunity with a, a benefits to our environment and our school sites. And so we, we do see it, Catherine, it's definitely an implementation as well. And we did see them starting to implement that at Ocean Air. And so we'll start it earlier this year at the other sites and leading to implementation and making sure that we are separating waste, we are reducing waste. And we are ensuring that we're being better stewards of our property.
So what, I'm just wondering, why do students use these different and what are the implications for our custodial staff? Is there some, are there other things they need? How does it affect them?
It's a great question and that's why we had Carlos so involved in the beginning. So we looked at things like, we need to, to do this effectively, you need to pour out the milk so that we can get rid of those cartons. You're, you're putting less into a waste bin, it can be disposed of differently. And so we looked at what are the, the things that they need so that that's being disposed appropriately? It's also something that can be done by our custodial staff in a manner that, you know, they're not gonna get hurt. And they're gonna be able to take care of their job and be able to get it done. So that is part of the process too and working on it and making sure that we are, we are setting them up for success and also getting buy-in from that staff.
So eventually is this something that we could operate in-house without, I mean, we've got, you know, the company that comes in and trains everybody how to do it. But can we do this on our own at what, at certain point?
Yes, we could certainly do it on our own at a certain point. And then I think that we want to do is monitor the benefit that this brings. Because when, one of the beauties of this is that this is done at a lunch club level where the kids are getting this much educational benefit out of it. Outside of their classroom and there's ties to classroom, there's some connections to STEAM and things that we can do as well. And so we will monitor that and look at whether it's something that we, we think should be brought back as a continuation of a partnership next year. And we'll certainly update you on the progress and, and if that's a recommendation we bring, we would be giving you updates beforehand and letting you know why we thought it should be something to continue with if we do so.
That'd be great, yeah, I would, I'd love an update down the line.
Great, yeah, thank you very much Chris for bringing this board, we really, I mean, everyone's saying we're supportive of this. Is there a motion to award the contract to, for district-wide green team waste diversion education program?
Some move.
Is there a second? Is, is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion adopted, award of the contract for district-wide green team waste diversion education, education program passes. Thank you very much. And we are at our closing items, so on one board review, preliminary items for the August twenty twenty-three regular board meeting. And then we will be at twelve point two, adjourned into closed session. The board will meet in closed session to consider the following matters, thirteen point one, conference of negotiators for government code section five four nine five seven point six. Agency designated representative, Q I M O, board president, Peter Fagan, and representative employees. Assistant superintendent, business services, Crystal Lancy, assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent human resources, Ryan Sami, superintendent Paul Newquay, issue. What matter is, as I, as is identified on the agenda?
Sorry, do you want, just going back to twelve point one, where there, I, I'm kind of fast. Our preliminary items for the August regular board meeting, I'd like to add an update on the enrollment projections. All, all the questions that we, we still have, um, that will be addressed at the August meeting.
Okay, um, board will now adjourn into closed session at seven forty-seven PM. Hi Catherine, Sam, I'm glad I can get you all this microphone. What's that?
Do you hear me?
Yeah, we're all good, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. Okay, fourteen point one, reconvene, open session, we're reconvene, open session at nine forty-five PM. Reporter of action taken in closed session, everyone board, I'm sorry, fourteen point two, reporter of action taken in closed session, committee board, but in closed session, no action was taken. Fourteen point three, board approval, superintendent's employment agreement. So, agenda item fourteen point three for superintendent. The proposed employment contract is for a term of four years, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The agreement also states that the superintendent will be paid an annual salary of three hundred thousand fifty-two dollars. For the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, superintendent is eligible to receive a ten thousand dollar stipend for an earned doctoral degree if applicable. The superintendent is also eligible to receive an annual longevity stipend equal to eight percent of her annual contract salary. In addition, the superintendent will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's administrative employees. An annual cost to the district of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Other fringe benefits include, included within the superintendent agreement include twelve sick days, twenty-five vacation days per year, and reimbursement for professional growth activities, travel, and actual unnecessary expenses while performing day-to-day duties for the district in accordance with board policy and monthly employer contribution of eight hundred thirty-three dollars and forty cents to the superintendent's fringe benefit consortium with the Samuel Young Economic Office Education, four oh one eight account with no cash option. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's employment agreement?
Call no to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed?
Um, yeah, no.
Motion to adopt the superintendent's employment agreement passes. Fourteen point four. Board approval, assistant superintendent's employment agreements. For the assistant superintendent of business services, the proposed employment contract is for a term of four years, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The agreement also states that the assistant superintendent of business services will be paid an annual salary of two hundred thousand, two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dol, hundred, sorry, two hundred and nine thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The assistant superintendent of business services is eligible to receive a five thousand dollar stipend for an earned doctoral degree if applicable. After completing four years of service as assistant superintendent, starting with the fifth year of service, the assistant superintendent of business services will also be eligible to receive an annual longevity stipend equal to four percent of his annual contract salary. In addition, the assistant superintendent of business services will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's administrative employees and annual cost to the district of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Other fringe benefits include, included within the assistant superintendent of business services agreement include twelve sick days, twenty-five vacation days per year, and reimbursement for professional growth activities, travel, and actual unnecessary expenses while performing day-to-day duties for the district in accordance with board policy. Uh, is there a motion to approve the assistant superintendent's, uh, approve, actually? I, should I give both at the same time? Okay, so that was for the assistant superintendent of business services and we can do this for the assistant superintendent of human resources. The proposed employment contract is for a term of four years, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. The agreement also states that the assistant superintendent of human resources will be paid an annual salary of two hundred four thousand three hundred ninety-six dollars for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. The assistant superintendent of human resources is eligible to receive a five thousand dollar stipend for an earned doctoral degree if applicable. After completing four years of service as the assistant superintendent, starting the fifth year of service, the assistant superintendent of human resources will also be eligible to receive an annual longevity stipend equal to four percent of his annual contract salary. In addition, the assistant superintendent of human resources will receive the health and welfare benefits, which are provided to the district's administrative employees and an annual cost to the district of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Other fringe benefits included within the assistant superintendent of human resources agreement include twelve sick days, twenty-five vacation days per year, and reimbursement for professional growth activities, travel, and actual unnecessary expenses while performing day-to-day duties for the district in accordance with board policy. Is there a motion to approve the assistant superintendent's employment agreement?
No to move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion to adopt the assistant superintendent's employment agreement passes. Fifteen point one, adjourned meeting, is there a motion adjourned?
Second.
Sorry, second, correct, motion to adjourn meeting, I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion adjourned meeting passes, meeting adjourned at nine fifty PM. Thank you very much.